We will now move to our City Council Study Session for June 29th. Again, all of our council are present. Item one on this agenda is to review our agenda for our Monday, July 3rd meeting. So, council, please refer to that document. Mr. Brady, do you have any staff presentations on anything on this agenda?
Not presenting, I mean, we're ready to answer questions, but we are going to, we're going to, at this time, just pull item 4L from the agenda for further evaluation.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Duff?
I did have a question on 4C. I don't know much about this, but it's the software for the CIP management. And it sounds like the original selected vendor was not able to fulfill the contract. And I didn't realize software is so dang expensive. Were we able, did we spend money with the first vendor?
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor.
If yes, were we able to get reimbursement?
Councilmember Duff, we got part of our contract back. Purchasing negotiated part of the money back. We got into the contract with the parent selected firm and found that they could not provide the services that we needed. And they had left part of the services out of their scope, where they wanted to add another million dollars to their contract. And we felt we weren't going to get the quality product we wanted for the money we were going to pay. So, we looked at the other vendors. We've elected to go back to the vendor we've currently had for the last 10 years, which won't be supporting it after 2024. They're going to work with us to develop a product the way we want it developed. And then they're going to include a subscription to update the software every year as well. So, it seems like a lot, but that's 10 years of software. So, that's on average 580,000 a year, as opposed to the total number you see in the report for 10 years. And we currently have, I can show you my list, I have 34 pages of projects. It's about 300 projects over the next four years with a total estimated cost of 1.4 billion. Now, some of those come and some of those go, and some of them get changed out for others over that time period because things change as cities grow. But that's kind of what we're managing. We bring all of this together in one software package. So, we look at project management as kind of like a four-legged stool, scope, schedule, budget, and quality. And what this software allows us to do is bring all of those together. We can monitor the schedule. We can bring in the data from the Advantage System and have all the financial information there. We can track schedules. We can track budgets. We can track scope. We include all our communications in this, all the contract documents, all the contracts. It's quite a list of paper documents we'd have to be managing without this software.
So, even though this vendor, the current one that we just brought back, right, you know, to, and we're customizing the software at this time because not, the current version of the software we have isn't going to be supported until '24, is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
But this company is going to sustain, of course,
Yes.
and be able to fulfill, you know, 10 years.
They actually worked with us 10 years ago to develop the product, and then they turn around and sold it to New York City. So, they are, what they're doing for us in this contract is they've agreed to cut the cost of their development hours in half because we helped them understand how public agencies manage projects, and they know that after their 10 years with us. So, in the end, what they do is, and they take the adjustments we've asked for, and they put them in their box solution for other communities. So, we get a little bit of a cut on the cost to develop the software we want.
So, is the customized software equivalent to what it would be kind of an out-of-the-box, you know, in a software that's not customized?
No, we can't find an out-of-the-box solution that does everything we want it to do.
So, we spend a little bit more in order to have the best management?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for that explanation. I never thought I'd be asking about CIP software. Thanks.
Ms. Spilsbury?
Just real quick, on 4B, is this the official start of the Centauri Use Pipeline?
It is.
It is, okay. I didn't know if this was like something that needed to be done before we say it's the official start, but this is going to be the official start.
This is the official start, Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury. We came to you earlier with GMP1, which is for acquiring the pipe and materials. This is the first construction portion. It's the 16-inch, two miles of 16-inch in Greenfield. We will be starting construction about 500 feet north of the intersection of Greenfield and Southern on July 24th is the current date.
July 24th, okay.
And then we have a series of four more GMPs coming for more pipe work, more treatment plant work, and eventually we'll have a Transportation's Mesa Moves project to repave two miles of Greenfield, too. All of this work will happen together.
Okay, great, thank you.
I feel her pain.
Thank you, council. Other questions regarding Monday's agenda? Mr. Summers?
Thank you. I just want, I'm going to take these as a group, but 6C, Edge on Main, maybe I'll focus on that one. 7A, residences at Dobson and 7B, Little Mesa Phase 4. Overall, these are good projects, particularly looking at the Cubs Way Stadium. I think the idea of integrating residential into this commercial space is going to be really helpful to reinvigorate something that's really a little stagnant and could use this. Edge on Main, I think are the same thing. That project looks pretty good from a perspective, and I'm going to pull it up, but pretty good from a perspective of density. We definitely need, this is an area downtown where downtown should have a lot of density. My concern on these things is it's kind of a, it is somewhat belasse, particularly the one downtown. The aesthetic just doesn't thrill me. I mean, this is a six-story building. I was driving, happened to be driving 7th Avenue downtown, downtown Phoenix, south of downtown, south of the railroad line. It's an area that's near the zone that you're all familiar with. The aesthetic that they put on the outside as it faces the street was, is pretty spectacular, and I did send a copy to Mary of that. It uses a combination of brick and stone and metal. It does have concrete that's painted and stucco that's painted as well as integrated. But what strikes me on some of these, particularly the Edge, it just looks, there's two colors of paint. There's a, there's a couple of hotels in my district that are four or five stories tall. They're a little old, they're about 20 years old, maybe approaching 25, and they were just four stories of stucco. And then they repainted them, and they chose, for whatever reason, meconium brown, not the prettiest of color for that. So, my concern is if we don't push up in aesthetic over time, this is going to get, start to look really tired. So, when I look at this, am I just looking at white and brown and white and tan, or is there something else going here that's going to add to the visual appeal that will be sustained over time?
Yeah, so, Mayor, Councilmember Summers, very much appreciate that comment. What you're seeing on the agenda today is just the rezoning to get a different transect so they can come in and actually opt in and do their zoning clearance. So, the exhibit that you're viewing is just preliminary, and it's mostly just massing. That's why you're not seeing the actual kind of elevations in the materials that would be part of that. But they are in for review for that actual zoning clearance, those elevations. And we do know as well that the downtown transformation team is working on a development agreement with the applicant, and in there, that includes certain requirements for quality design associated with it. No, since it's, since it's form-based code, it would be reviewed by staff unless there's some reason you decide it needs to go to design review.
You know, actually, I'm comfortable with that, too, Chris, going to, having staff do it, it's just.
No, I just didn't know whether that stuff was included or not. Because we usually try not to get into colors and textures. That's usually why we have the design review board. But staff can, I'm sure with your input, staff can also look at it.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I wanted to just make a statement on that. And then the Cubs one's a little, I like the bump outs. I mean, the design here, and I don't want to turn this council into a design review board, I've got enough to do, but, you know, if it gets to me and I'm not overly pleased, it's, that's something. I think, once again, I think it's a great project. I would just like to see more elements than just paint to make this visually appealing and to withstand the test of time, to know that, hey, when we come back in 20 years, this is going to look really nice still. Is that the same thing for the Cubs Stadium? It does have some nice design aesthetics.
Yeah, so, Mayor, Councilmember Summers, so, that one has gone through design review, and I think maybe the renderings don't do it justice because it is more of a monochrome kind of color theme, but it does meet all of our design standards as far as the mix of materials, so it does have three different kind of unique materials on that elevation. And it was received very well from design review board.
Okay. I'm just going to keep it a general comment that as we move forward, and particularly with the one for downtown, since that's just a, you know, a zoning plan hasn't gone through design review, that we really look at pushing up that design aesthetic. And it's not just for, that comment stands not just for these three projects particularly, but as we move forward, in residential, commercial, industrial, all of it, we deserve, we deserve a better design aesthetic in Mesa, in this area. So, that's, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, other questions regarding Monday's agenda? All right, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to our agenda for this meeting. Item 2A on this agenda is a presentation and to update, and an update on a proposed citywide program for Mesa faith-based organizations to serve the needs of our community called the Together in Service Program. Andrea and Lindsay, thank you for working hard on this.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and council. Thank you very much for having us here this morning. I'm Andrea Alaco, Director of Diversity and Engagement here for the city, and with me is Lindsay Belinky, Deputy Director within the Community Services Department. And we are very excited to be able to be here in front of you this morning to discuss another new proposed program under our Together Mesa Initiative. The Together Mesa Initiative, as you all know, was launched last year as part of our commitment to represent our community within our programs and services that we have here in the city. Under this umbrella, we have created, within the past year, four of these new programs that you see below you. So, we have the Honorary Streets, we have the Arts in the Park, which we are happy to kick off this fall, and then now coming forth with Together in Service. So, the concept for Together in Service is, and this statement says it best, convening our faith-based organizations to collectively understand the landscape of social services currently being provided and to collaborate on initiatives to further meet the needs of our community. So, we will be working Together in Service. What we have identified is that, over the past years, there has been a variety of external organizations that have come together in different various forms of collectives. And what we understand is that a lot of those organizations were on the backs of a single individual, whether that be a pastor or a leader within our community, to host these conversations on how we can collectively identify the social and human services in our community. And particularly after the pandemic, we saw that those collectives really seemed to filter. That was a time when us as a city were really leaning on these organizations, the different faith groups, to be able to provide either volunteers, we had some different programs that were formed, such as the Adopt a Grandparent Program, or our food bank services that we hosted at the Convention Center. We really leaned into these organizations to be able to help respond to community needs. And so, what we recognize as a city is that we can take over the physical facilitation portion of that, the management of sending out email reminders, of being able to find a physical location to host meetings, to bring topic experts, to have concentrated discussions on how we are going to community problem solve. And so, that is our city commitment through Together in Service. And then we will be looking at these faith-based organizations to really drive the conversation and to be able to have them continue to identify, be part of that solution solving, and to be able to, again, be a partner and learn what the city has to offer them. So, you can see here that we had identified six program goals, and just to kind of recap a little bit of what I had just stated. The first goal, to educate and reengage the faith community to meet the needs of the city, and that's a pretty broad umbrella right there. Number two, centralized groups for, a centralized group for faith organizations to share ideas and needs with the city, resources that we can provide them, and for the city to share, so that we can collectively serve together. What we're really looking to be able to accomplish in ongoing meetings is to be able to find where some of these organizations have resources. Maybe it is land, maybe it is vacant space during the week. And then to be able to match them and to be able to help, you know, find resources. Maybe it's perhaps connecting them with a nonprofit organization who can have a service within their facilities. There are a lot of nondenominational services that these faith organizations provide. Think of daycare service, think, you know, different types of parenting courses, you know, things that are for the entire community, and those are the types of services that we want to encourage these organizations to provide more of. We want to diversify the number of agencies and organizations involved in meeting Mesa's needs. We hope that through this collective effort that we're really being able to locate and identify different providers that we are not yet working with. Inspire collaboration, innovation, and creativity in meeting the needs of our diverse communities. What we have also been able to recognize, I think it's, you know, goes without saying that post-pandemic, a lot of service delivery has changed. And what we know of from these faith organizations is that their models that they have leaned on for centuries are also changing. And so, we want to be able to make sure that they're aware of the tools and resources that are out there for them in order to keep up with these different changing models. Number five, open communication and a dedicated time and place for us to connect. Again, that just goes with the simple, you know, meeting facilitation, what our staff is excellent stewards of being able to be a convener of space. And then celebrate support and showcase the faith communities in Mesa. It goes without saying, our faith communities have been a strong pillar within Mesa, and so we just want to be able to continue to highlight and support them in the great work that they're doing. So, we see this kind of ongoing structure, again, as our city role. I reviewed with you the defined mission, vision, and goals. We will be putting out a community call to action. We are currently have an open survey that Lindsay will speak a little bit more about, and then being able to do some announcements in upcoming meetings. We will continue ongoing building of the network. And then the meat and potatoes of the program really comes with that engagement and collaboration and ongoing resource sharing. What we are already hearing of topics of interest from some of these faith organizations is to learn more about our housing path to recovery, homelessness and human services support, our education and workforce development, volunteer opportunities, the list goes on. And so, many of those topics fall under the realm of Lindsay's purview within community services, and so I'll turn it over to her, and she can further explain how her Community Engagement Division is going to be providing the staffing support for this model.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. So, this is our beehive structure, we like to call it, the honeycomb. But we wanted to share with you kind of how we envision the program pillars coming to life through this program structure. So, we really do see ourselves as this convener and connector. Through, through that vision, we are hoping to, well, we're first doing the needs assessment. So, that is an active survey that is out already. We launched it a couple of weeks ago and are already getting a lot of great feedback from our faith-based organizations. And what we're really asking within that survey is what types of services, those non-denominational services that are provided to the community, what are those that currently exist? What maybe do you want to do that you haven't done? Do you need, is there a gap that we can connect you to another agency or have some sort of collaborative effort within the faith community or within the city to really bring those programs or services to life? And also then to understand what are those key topic areas that they're interested in learning more about? And so, that is open for the next few weeks, and we're happy to provide that in both English and Spanish. And we're hoping to really utilize the data from that survey to then inform our quarterly networking meetings. So, that's where we will be providing that space for everyone to come together. We will have subject matter experts. So, if we're covering homelessness for the day, we will bring in a few people to speak about the current issue at hand and really talk about around homelessness, responsible giving, for example, a call to action, how can your congregation support this issue and do more around that issue? Where are there volunteer opportunities or other ways to impact the issue? And then we'll always have time for networking and collaboration within those meetings. We also plan to create a registry and map those services that we hear about from the faith community. So, if you envision our neighborhood registration map that we have through the Community Engagement Team, that is kind of where this idea has come from, where you can look and see what are all those services out in the community right now. If you are looking for something in your neighborhood, you could refer to this map and understand, you know, where can I get a food box today, or where can I find an ESL class, or whatever it is you're looking for. We're hoping to make those things more accessible. We also plan to really promote Volunteer Days of Service and have those opportunities just more readily available to this community. We know many of them already are very involved in service, but some may not know about those opportunities, so we plan to engage in that way as well. Additionally, we plan to provide a ongoing newsletter where we have, again, some issue education, some call to action, and just continue to connect with the community and provide resources, as well as a resource hub where we may provide an online space where people can communicate with each other or find resources, different educational materials and whatnot, provide maybe some social media, easy posts that they could provide to their community or push out within their channels about different issues that are important within the community as well. So, this is just our structure that we envision, and we know that we would like to offer, and we anticipate that the faith community will ask, you know, for additional things and come up with some other great ideas, so we're excited to see that come to life as well.
And I just want to acknowledge again Lindsay and the Community Engagement Division. They're the perfect stewards of this program as this pairs with what their daily work is already with being able to be that source of education materials and connection point. We see the faith community as, you know, one of our pillars of, similar to nonprofit organizations, similar to the business community, and so this is, again, just being able to strengthen those connections as we're starting to see we're losing some of that over time. So, to give you a snapshot of how the program has been launching, in May, there was a presentation to the Human Relations Advisory Board in which we, as well, received some great input that will help us be able to structure this moving forward. We're now in June, the public survey was launched, and then we have also been meeting with some targeted organizations already to do some of that one-on-one survey collecting, and again, being able to invite them to participate in this group moving forward. We will be utilizing in August, it's August 23rd, you all will be invited, to the Mayor's Faith-Based Breakfast. This is an annual breakfast, I believe it'll be the eighth year, and we will use that as a launching point to be able to have the program announcement and initial survey results, and do the remaining call to action to the other organizations that typically participate in that meeting to be able to, again, participate in this ongoing collaboration. And then we see the program formally launching in the fall, where we will begin the website, the resource connections, and having the first quarterly meeting in November. And you can see the ongoing meeting schedule then from there on. And with that, we're happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Spilsbury.
So, I love this. I have, we've talked about this for the last couple of years. I guess my biggest question on all of this is how do nonprofits fit into this? Like, are we doing this separate from nonprofit coordination? Because I just feel like they're doing the same thing, just faith-based or nonprofits, right? And so, if we don't include them in this, I just feel like we're going back to our silos again. So, how do we create that connection between all of those?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury. That's a wonderful question. So, the way that we are going to be constructing this is going to be in phases. So, what we have noticed from the past models that have occurred is that there was some opportunities where you have the different joint, whether it's faith-based, nonprofits. A lot of these faith organizations have a nonprofit hat. And so, the way that we are trying to make this manageable, but also be able to target and make those small and medium-sized, small, excuse me, faith organizations feel welcome is to start strictly by if they have a faith purview. So, we are welcoming of those that do have a nonprofit arm, but keeping the conversation a little bit more structured into, again, not necessarily trying to provide different types of preferences or opportunities for the nonprofit side, but strictly making it an information and resource sharing. We will have other opportunities and other working groups based on specific topics such as homelessness, our homelessness office and solutions. They will have working meetings where you do have both arms at the table. So, there is going to be a lot of cross-sectoring happening, and we recognize that it is going to evolve and hopefully welcome more of the nonprofits into this group. But at this time, we're really trying to make it manageable by sticking it to just faith organizations and having them show up with their service provider.
I mean, I understand, there's over 200 nonprofits in the city. So, to add, to add that many more to this, I get that. I just, to me, when you've, the list of topic interests, every single one of those, I can think of nonprofits around those, and so then why would we be having a conversation and a map of resources and not include really great nonprofits that are already doing that work? Homelessness is a perfect example, right? So, I just, the map of resources feels very incomplete to me if it doesn't have all of the resources. And so, that's, to me, it was important to get the coordination and collaboration of the nonprofits and the faith-based. So, that's why when I saw this presentation, I was like, oh, so close. Like, I love this, but also I really would like to see that nonprofit coordination as well, which I know is complicated and confusing, and you're playing with a lot of different partners and personalities and stuff. But if the city's the, if our role is just the coordination so that we're not trying to tell anyone how to do their job, we're not trying to, you know, to tell anyone how to do it, but just the coordination, I do feel like there's a place that we could do that nonprofit coordination in there. That's just my thoughts. But my other question is, so far, have you run across any faith-based organizations that are like, you know, we're doing our thing and it's working good, and we don't really need the city to be a part of it, and so we don't, we're not really interested in being part of this? Like, have you run into that yet? Or is it a situation where you would find out what their resources are, but then maybe they wouldn't be part of the group? Or, I mean, have you run across that?
Thank you again, Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, for that question. And I do want to just acknowledge your past comment.
Yeah, sorry, that was a lot.
No, I, we sincerely appreciate this input, and I think that that is a wonderful aspiration as we continue to look at then the future growth of the program. That's really why we're coming in front of you today. And, you know, we are starting, again, with a targeted audience, so that way it's a little bit more manageable as a, as a group, but I think we'll definitely take to heart your comments and input. We have not come across any organizations that have had meetings with us that have declined the opportunity, because, again, what we're hearing is that their own models are changing. They are not having folks showing up for maybe those traditional in-person services, congregation services that they traditionally have had. They're not having volunteerism in the same manners. And so, they're looking for the tools and resources to connect with their communities and to be able to learn about some of the offerings that we have. We have utility assistance programs, we have different types of, you know, resources that would significantly help their communities. And so, we have not directly heard that feedback. There has been questions certainly of just kind of, you know, what is this going to be? What is the intention? And so, we've had to provide some of those clarifying responses to let them know that this is going to be a neutral space where we are just looking to be able to put a name and a face together and that they know that they have someone in the city they can reach out to.
Great, okay, thank you.
And I would just add, Councilmember Spilsbury, Mayor, that for Together in Service, I think a lot of the faith-based organizations, churches, synagogues, other... a lot of the faith-based organizations, churches, synagogues, other places of service, that we, I feel like a lot of the education is helping to push information back out and to their congregations and their communities. Whereas we will have some specialized nonprofit meetings where we're talking about, okay, what are you seeing at your facility today as challenges? When you're providing services, where are those gaps in services? How can we collaborate better around this issue? And having more detailed topic or conversations around that where there are a little more nuance depending on the organizations that are at the table. So there, to me, we can have all of it, but it will be phased. And we, I agree. Thank you so much for your comments. They're very helpful and giving good ideas.
Thank you. Other questions on this? Yes, Ms. Duff?
I really don't have a question. I'll just make a comment that I'm really glad that we're taking this measure to collaborate and with the faith-based community, and I agree, you know, about the nonprofits. Because during COVID, we really leaned into our faith-based communities to help us, you know, we call, how can we team up to address all these issues that are coming on so fast? And I think this is a proactive way to strengthen our city and make things better on a daily basis, but God forbid that we run into another crisis. At least we have this network that we can organize and administrate collectively, you know, getting resources and services to people in need. And so I think it makes our city stronger, and I want to thank you for your efforts on this.
Thank you. I just want to, any other comments? I just want to underline what's been said. I think, to me, this is one of those legacies of the pandemic. One of the things we discovered during the pandemic was that there were some holes in our safety net, there were some things that we wanted to do, but that wasn't best done by the city. You know, it was better for faith groups or nonprofits to come in and partner with us on these things. And under the previous model that we'd been working with, I think the faith groups were kind of getting lost a little bit because, you know, the meetings turned into really, I mean, the heavy lifters in our community are the nonprofits. And so it was just, you'd go and you'd say, wow, there's, I can think of a lot of good organizations that I wish were participating in this that probably just don't feel compelled to participate. So I think this is an attempt to be a little more encouraging specifically to the faith community, saying there's an important role for the faith community to play in Mesa. You know, we all know that Mesa's a great collection of people who need help and people who feel compelled, many of them for, you know, in faith-based organizations, to provide that assistance. So we've got, I think that the nonprofits are meeting through the chamber, and I think previously, we don't want to compete, you know, create competing organizations or make people go to the same meeting twice in different locations. So I think, again, this is just, we held off on the interfaith breakfast, it's usually in August, because, I mean, in April, because we wanted to kind of rebrand it and launch this anew in August. And so if you can help us get the word out to all the, you know, all types of faith groups or just groups that have ties to faith-based organizations, that we really want to just do a specific outreach to them and convene and share ideas and hear what they're doing and see if there's anything we can do to express our appreciation for what they're doing, I think this is going to bear great fruit. And at the same time, I think we'll continue to strengthen our relationship with the nonprofits as well in addition to this. Yes, Ms. Duff?
I'd like to make just one more comment about, as far as faith churches that have reached out to me, and one of the things that they have been curious about, and is they often have a lot of land around their church and wanting to use it for, to put a few affordable housing units there that they could rent to their parishioners. It seems overwhelming to them. I'm like, well, that would take a rezon and I would like to put a goal out there to maybe have a workshop or a discussion about that, that we have those who want to do that, that we have some handholding. I don't know what to say, I don't mean to say that in a demeaning way, but really, you know, they're not in the development world. And so when you say you've, you just got a rezon and do this, and they're just like, you know. And, but I think it's a great way to have some additional units. And if they chose to do that, a way to have, talk through it, how do we do this? What needs to happen? You know, kind of the service and talking it through and working through it so they want to do it. I know, I see one church has submitted to go this route. I have another church who wanted to, and keeps on talking to me about it, but I think they're lost, like, what is the next, how can I get this done? But to have that as a discussion point in what we can do with the faith-based communities. Thanks.
Thank you. So again, just to reiterate something, or I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman.
I didn't call your attention, no. I have a couple of comments. So thank you, ladies, for the presentation. As I listened to it, I just wondered where we were going to go with it, because I did have some questions, because I really don't feel that the city should be involved in providing all the services that you provide, but connecting everybody together, I think, is essential. So that's where I'm glad you're going with. I know that over the years I've served as a council member, some of our faith-based organizations and even nonprofits have done some of what you're talking about, and it's adversely affected the neighborhoods. I just want you to be aware that, you know, like a community kitchen, they want to set up and serve communities' kitchens there in their churches, and that's caused angst in neighborhoods, because why are all these people coming here? You know, those people, NIMBYs, I guess, you know, to that. But with all due respect, they've done a marvelous job on some of the staging, clothing, food distribution, just as we've done in collaboration with each other. I think that we should be in the business of connecting the organizations to one another, and that probably might be as far as I think we should go. I mean, we do provide housing, we do provide other amenities and, you know, sheltering for homelessness right now. So I think just continue with the collaboration that we're doing today and having this program mature is, I'm interested in it. But I don't want to get, my opinion, I don't want to get real deep into it. I just provide all the connectivity, let the organizations grow and just flourish, and let them blossom, is where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any additional comments, council? August 23rd, please invite any faith-oriented, faith-based organization to that faith-based breakfast that we're going to have to kind of launch this. Thank you again for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, item 2B is approval of minutes for the executive session. Is there a motion to approve that? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. And Ms. Spilsbury, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you, that passed unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, anything you'd like to share with us? I know I've seen you out and about the last week. Ms. Duff, are you ready?
No, but I'm going to wing it here. I'm going to leave the delegation, I'm looking at my calendar, what happened this past week. I'm going to leave the delegations to Norm Mayors, to Vice Mayor Heredia.
Why don't you start with a little Level 1 arcade on Tuesday?
Well, yeah, let's talk about the exciting, well, a few exciting things. One is the Level 1, it will be opening this, no, Friday, the 7th, I think. Anyway, the 7th.
The 7th is?
A Friday. It will be opening at 48 West Main in downtown Mesa. There is a little video, so to get a preview on social media and YouTube. It is an arcade pinball gaming, and I didn't think I was into it until I tried it and it brought back, yeah, I was into it. It is lots of fun. It is 6,000 square feet, two levels. It has a bar, has some food, they'll have its, you know, I know they have like Token Tuesdays, Wine and Whiskey Wednesdays, and Throwback Thursdays, so there's a lot of activities around that. And then eventually, in a few months, there will, the bottom floor, it will be like a speakeasy, and they're calling it Alchemy at 48, Alchemy, I know is in the word. And it's very exciting, is bringing a new dimension to downtown as far as things to do, and they did a wonderful job in building out the old building that was there, and so check it out. It's, and their sister company is Outcast Donuts, which is around the corner, well, down the street, around the corner. And they have donuts and breakfasts and espresso martinis for the evening and all kinds of things, so they're bringing a lot to downtown. Also, yesterday, I attended Fiesta PD, hosted a boys and girls camp at the Boys and Girls Club. Nicole Leba with We Run Mesa did some activities, running around the gymnasium, we had lots of fun, and ice cream and some prizes. Thank you to the Mesa Library for providing books. The kids had a great time, were looking through them, finding their summer reading together as well as community services and providing some other things. So that was a lot of fun. And then last Friday, some of us attended the Mesa PD Academy Class 54 graduation. Congratulations to all the new members of our police department. I think that's about it.
Thank you. Mr. Summers?
A couple of meetings that I just wanted to extend my appreciation for, just over this weekend, I had a meeting in Encore, which is an enclave of East Mart. We had Commander Chris Rash, the new Superstition Division commander, come out and speak to concerns of the residents for crime. The good news is, there's not a lot of crime. But please, if you have a car and you park it outside, lock your door. There's been, there's been break-ins there, and particularly if you're carrying a firearm, don't leave it in the car. We're seeing a lot of thefts of firearms coming from just the fact that people are breaking into cars, so secure your sidearm. Also at that meeting was Dr. Nana Apaya, our Community Services Director, I want to extend my appreciation to him as well, gave a briefing to everybody about the general plan. There are also public meetings going on. I think you heard a lot of the concerns from the residents that have been expressed about development and particularly filling out the high-quality development. In addition, I had a group meeting in Belavilla about a week or so ago. A lot of officers in attendance, Lieutenant Brian Solier, Sergeant Tom Zolgman, and Officer Jared Mitchell, I want to express my appreciation for your time, for coming out to speaking to the residents, again, the same issues, it's just breaking into cars seems to be the big thing going on right about now. They expressed many similar issues, they want to see high-quality design, but also a lot of concern about water issues, making sure that we have secured our water future. We spoke about drilling new wells, how we are working with the water issue, and we spoke a lot about the Grass Zero Escape Project. A lot of folks did not know that we had that program or that that program was available for their HOA or their business to use. So we spoke a little bit about that as well. So it's just things in the interest of the community, I think, are the types of things that we're discussing as a council as well. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Heredia?
As Councilmember Duff mentioned, last week, we hosted about 10 mayors from Sonora, small towns, took a tour of downtown Mesa and got to know a little bit more. They were visiting for a tourism trip in the valley around several cities, so I got to see Mesa and how they can, we can work together in the future, so thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Ms., go for it.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who came out on Tuesday evening for the District 5, tomorrow's Mesa. I guess it was the first event of the Urban Lab, the interactive event where we're working on the general plan, constituents got to give feedback, and we had a great crowd, I think maybe even about 50 people came, maybe a little bit more than that. So thank you to everybody who came, who gave their feedback, and to Jeff Robinson and his team, they did a great presentation of informing people sort of where we are, working on the plan, and there was an interactive, people got on their phones and could sort of give their feedback in live time. And I think they, I've already talked to some constituents that enjoyed that part of it and seeing it, seeing their feedback live. And so anyway, I thought that was a great launch of that event, and I don't know how the rest of them went. Councilmember Summers, were you at the one at District 6?
Yes, I actually attended that one briefly. I was double-booked between Encore and that one, but I stopped in in that one, gave a little bit of introduction, but it was about 30 to 40 people, I think, in that one.
Well, great, and thank you, Mayor, for coming to the District 5 one. I think that was helpful to have you there.
He didn't come to mine.
Appreciated that, sorry. Sorry to bring that up. Anyway, thanks.
You bet. Yeah, it was a great, I thought the folks who put on the presentation and tried to evoke, you know, comments from the crowd did a great job, and a lot of good things are going to come out of this process. Mr. Freeman?
Thanks, Mayor. Hey, spoiler alert, I think we're going to have a Celebration of Freedom activity. I want people just to be aware of that. If you want to see some fun fireworks, we're actually going to have them in Mesa. What else are we going to have? We're going to have a car show, and we're going to have a tractor show.
Oh, did you read about that?
Yeah, did you?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're going to have some really cool tractors there for the kids to crawl on. Maybe we'll let Mr. Smith even drive one, who knows? But we're going to have a fun activity there for Celebration of Freedom, so invite the public to come. It's one of our great activities that Mesa enjoys. So thank you, Mr. Brady and your staff, for doing that.
Yes, that's coming up, isn't it? The other thing I would add to that announcement is, the thing I enjoy most about that evening is the naturalization ceremony. So if you haven't had the opportunity to watch new American citizens, you know, take an oath to become American citizens, it's really one of the most patriotic things I've ever been a part of. So that will, I think that starts about 5 o'clock in Centennial, in the Centennial Hall, the big room. Let me just double-check the timing of that. Like, I'm pretty sure it's 5 o'clock, but please, you know, try not to miss that. Council, any other comments about future, upcoming events? Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we'll have our council meeting on Monday, July 3rd at 5:15. We will also be reviewing on Monday the July 10th City Council meeting, and by doing so, we will cancel the July 6 study session. So again, Monday, we'll review, we'll have the agenda for the 3rd, and we'll also be reviewing the July 10th City Council meeting.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing else, council, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Summers and Ms. Spilsbury. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.